Everybody ready for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call show that everybody's present. Can have the guests please introduce themselves. Do we have anybody on Zoom? Oh, well, Wanda and Perry and Lisa. We have three on Zoom. Very good. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for attending. Kind of a motion to go into executive session. Discuss personnel. Can I have a second?
Second.
Been moved in second if we go into executive session for personnel. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Most in passing nationally.
Seven oh one.
Can I have a motion to resume the regular scheduled meeting?
So moved.
Movement second that we regular scheduled meeting, or first say aye?
Aye.
Seven forty. Public hearing, second reading amendment order ten dash twenty-nine tobacco.
He has previously read ordinance twenty twenty-one dash zero zero one. Ordinance amending section ten twenty-nine dash one subsection A, subsection one, and section ten twenty-nine dash five, so subsection B, the Shoney Town Code related to tobacco products and definitions.
And I have a motion to prove that. This is our second reading?
Correct.
Second reading, motion proof, second reading.
I'll make that motion.
Give the second. Been moved in second. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
B, employee job description and compensation. Want to leave, do we? I think we don't need to read the job descriptions, we'll post them.
They're posted.
Okay, they're already posted, and, so can I have? Anyway, got a nomination for compensation. Employee compensation.
I move we give all part-time employees a one dollar raise per hour for remainder of fiscal year.
Can I get a second?
You said part-time.
Oh.
Then you're gonna make another one for full-time?
Okay.
Is how you want to do it?
Let me amend that.
Okay, okay, that's what I.
All employees except department heads get one dollar raise.
Now can I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, move the second that we give all, all employees except department heads a one dollar an hour raise till the end of the fiscal year, which will be June thirtieth. So, any further discussion? None being all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carried. Preliminary engineering selection. Yes. Everybody have a chance to review my email or and or paper on our desk. I will, I will note, we went, went through a used guidance from Y dot template for our selection process and, and the selection process was, we had four, four real good proposal for good firms applied, but through the process, we determined HDR was, for this particular project was most qualified, or the best qualified.
I have questions over nine, does it been moved for a motion, so one more motion?
Okay, we can get a motion, I just brought that up, we can get a motion a second, we can get into further discussion if you like. Wouldn't, somebody make a, make a, make, make a motion on, on approving any of these, or do we, do we? We, we, we could, we can, we can, we can reject.
I made a motion weeks, we discuss the four bids for the sewer project for engineering bids.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I wanted to discuss it.
Discuss, discuss, discuss all four.
Yeah, we have, because I have questions.
Okay, very good.
So I'm not saying I want this one or that one, I want.
You betcha, very good. I think we can do that without a motion.
I think so.
Yeah, I think we can, we can, I think we can do it, we can, we can talk.
Because I have questions and I was there.
Good, let's.
Go ahead, Ron.
Okay, now the motion you're looking for tonight is to award a bid.
Yeah, we can, yeah, we can, we can move to word, word a bid, we can, we can also turn down all of these.
Yeah, because as far as the, what do they call it, statement of qualifications?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, okay, yeah, these guys are good guys, all.
Yeah, all, all. Yeah, all, all of these, yeah, provided, good documentation.
Yeah.
Yes, everyone, everyone, everyone's qualified.
And then the question I had that we might as well put right out in the public, we, we already.
Right.
What I was confused about is when I see such a huge difference in the bids was if everybody was on the same page as far as they all, everybody knew exactly what we were looking for.
I, I did reach out to each, all four, rep, all four companies and, and ask each one individually to make sure that there wasn't something extra in, that if I hadn't led anybody astray, or something that they were all, all following the R U S bulletin seventeen eighty dash two for guidance, all four firms assured me that they followed that guidance, and in fact, three of the firms on their bid, yeah, line item, line item, line, line, right on down the line. The one that did not, I did call, talk to them, and they referred to the, to the bulletin seventeen eighty dash two in their, in their SOQ. And they didn't list a bid item line item down on the right, but they gave a lump sum bid that everything was inclusive. And my question, well, are, and also are you adding extra stuff that's not in, in this bulletin? And the responses that know where, you know, we have, we stand by our, our numbers and we got what we think that it'll do to, to do a good job, that was, they're all of their responses.
I knew that, I just wanted to.
We have two representatives here.
Transparency is all.
Two companies here, but if there's any question, but yeah, that was, that was because we did have a wide range and wide range and, and, and price.
Right, I just, like I said, just for transparency purposes, so everybody knows.
One why question, where, where are the budget, where from the budget will this money come from for this study?
So we had a hundred and seven thousand dollars that we transferred this year into our general fund. Sixty thousand of it was appropriated for road raider.
The other forty seven thousand.
Has not been appropriated.
Well, was set into a line item for repairs of all maintenance for backhoe and dump truck. It wasn't that line, I, I remember that.
The hundred and seven thousand itself, only sixty thousand actually was appropriated, the other, that was a different money stream that was appropriate also into the line item for the road raider, which left, I believe seventy-three thousand five hundred in that line item.
I thought it was line item nine one four, if I remember right. And we appropriated, who's went strictly to maintenance for backhoe, road raider, dump truck. That whole funding went to that one category.
But the, the motion that was made and seconded and passed was only sixty thousand dollars was actually allocated of that, the rest of it originally sat there, we never.
There's still sitting in that, in that department for maintenance department for tobacco and stuff, correct?
Forty-seven thousand was not, it's still sitting as unallocated funds, sixty thousand of it was allocated towards tobacco.
So no, I thought it was all the rest was placed into that fund for.
It's just in our general fund right now.
No, I thought it was put in strictly for maintenance for tobacco and the dump truck for those replacements when they needed.
Not from that revenue, it wasn't, you had made a motion, I believe it was ten thousand that you had funded in there from a different account closure that we had a couple of months back, I'll go back through the minutes to find it. You had allocated ten thousand, or asked allocation of ten thousand for the road raider, and then the transfer of a hundred and seven thousand dollars. That one sixty thousand dollars was allocated for the road raider, the other forty-seven thousand was not allocated for.
I'll have to look at my notes, I have an impression it was going to go into the maintenance department.
While he, while he's doing that, I will bring up that through rural development. This is, this is, this, up to thirty thousand, this can be paid for with a grant. I believe we're, we're talking with them, we, there's two methods of getting a grant, one is applying for a specific grant for, for this. And the other is to roll it into the grant when we move forward. Which I believe, if it exceeded that, we can roll that into, but if not, at least thirty thousand is, is grant available.
Does this, does, does this study include anything of the phase three waters, our sewer line at all?
No, this, 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 this is here is just the preliminary P E R engineering report for the expansion, extension of our west side sewer line, that's, that's, that's what this is addressing, and rural development, that's, we're dealing with rural development is what is driving this survey, or I mean, they'll survey the problem, but they're, they're gonna have the basic preliminary for this world, the world development will require us to do to, to, to source their fundings and to make, make this, you know, save the town a lot of money if we use both rural development and Wyoming Business Council to fund the project. And they both offer grant money, rural development up to forty-five percent of the project, and Wyoming Business Council we're probably gonna get fifty, fifty percent is probably what we're looking at from them. But all this, all this here is that we'll start the engineering report and get that done to make us, so we can move the next step. Is what this is for, they require this P E R.
So what this is for is for USDA grant.
Yes.
Just to do the engineering study to see what it would take to develop that piece of ground.
Yes, and then we, and if, once we get this, this P E R done, that opens up, you know, there, opens up to us rural development's funding.
Okay, now I'm with you.
Yeah, so without this, we, we will not qualify for rural development funding.
So are we looking at business ready funding?
It's, the rural development is there.
I mean, when we get to the state.
When we get, get to the state, it's, it's through the Wyoming Business Council.
Yeah.
And it's, and we're probably looking at fifty, fifty funding on that, I, and with, we tied in the economic development, that opens the doors, maybe tied into some more, but rural development wants to, cause we're rural. You know, they wanna help towns like, you know, small towns like this, and, and so does the business council. And it did.
Thanks for clearing that up, I wasn't really sure how those were working together.
And I might be stumbling through this a little bit, either one of my engineer, and, and one of the engineers and probably could explain that P E R, they've done a lot of it, I haven't.
Well, as the old saying goes, I think the white elephant in the community, is there's a perception out there that we're spending all this money to butter up to the mushroom plant. Sorry, I mean, that's calling a spade a spade. And, you know, I don't.
Well, this is.
I mean, if we wanna see what it's gonna take to develop it here regardless of what the mushroom plant plants in the future, then that, that's one thing, but I don't want it to look like that we're just, you see what I'm saying?
Well, sure.
Yeah, cause that's how you get those rumors going that.
But we just, and what, what it does, that's one thing that, a couple of things, one thing that opens up particularly, say the forty acres between Hertz Road.
Yeah, I went out and actually drove around.
Drove out that, that, that helps us open, open that up for, for development housing, and we do have some people interested in building houses there now in the near future, that does open that up, but also this could do, if we tie this together with economic development, okay, one of the sewer projects had never gotten finished, one of the reasons, cause it's fifty, fifty money, the last project we did was fifty, fifty. So if you got a million dollar project, you gotta, city's got a town's gotta spend five hundred thousands, if it's seventy-five, twenty-five, it only cost us a quarter million. We have a, the Maple Street project that's deep and expensive, that might be a hundred thousand dollar project, we're at a fifty, fifty with that. We tie that to economic development, we may be seventy-five, twenty-five, or ninety, ten. Because that's an old line, it's in age replaced, and if we look at expanding over there, there, you know, there's probably a very good case to be made to replace that line also, we could be saving the town a, you know, two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars or more on that line there, it's alone by tying these together. And, and using rural development and, and, and SLIM to do, to do that, so it's, it's as a partnership, and they like to partner together. They both told me that, you know, and, but, you know, that's also sort of a caveat, that we tie, tie this together and we need to, we need to do that, and we might even get to where we need to redo our, you know, we may have to work on our, our sewer lagoon, you know? There again, we tie that to rural development and other things, it, it makes more money available for the town to do that, cause we need to leverage our money on something like this, and that's what, that's what this study is the stepping stone to, to propel us into that, so it's sort of a multi, but it's, like I said, it's the first step.
I mean, I hate to draw the meeting out, but I'm just now putting this together because there's some instances where you can use federal money or loan to match state, but if you try to take state to match state, they say, ah, time out.
Correct.
So that's what you're trying to say, is we're gonna have the feds.
Yes, appreciate it, yeah, that's exactly, I'm trying to use federal and state funding both, and like I said, I'm fairly new at this stuff, you know, Jim or Kyle may have a better explanation than what I'm given, you know, but that's sort of with talking with the state and the feds, and I've worked pretty hard with them on this, to try to, to, to develop that, and that's kind of, that's kind of where we're at, and it would, like I said, that would open that up and, and possibly, I think there's a may, may help us on a Maple Street project too. And like I said, at fifty, fifty, that's one reason they stopped at the last project they did, cause it turned to fifty, fifty project, and I know Scott fought real hard to try to work with the state to get seventy-five, twenty-five again, but, you know, they didn't do it, and I, we probably, and we're still fifty, fifty with them. I've asked for a clarification on that from them, but I haven't gotten a response, but I'm, I've been told that's pretty much where we're at with them on the state. So we, we tie the rural development in, and right now, rural development, they have more money and they have applications for stuff like this.
Well, I don't wanna do something prematurely and get the cart before the horse either, I mean, that's something we can discuss later, but I mean.
Well, yeah, no, but.
You know, I'd hate to put money into this and see it, no, nowhere, and then end up that we have, find out that we have to do collateral on business development out there, if we entered into a partnership with the mushroom plant, for instance, and then have to put up a bunch of our own real estate for collateral.
Yeah, no, we're not doing, we're not doing any.
Well, you know, but I mean.
Yeah, that hasn't been in the discussion or.
Yeah, right, I understand.
But yeah, all we're, all we're doing, all this doing, is doing right now would be looking at this engineering study.
Sure.
And that would make us eligible to go to rural development.
Well, Mike made the good comment, last meeting about skin in the game, man, I'd sure like to see developers and or the mushroom plant, whatever, to like, go, yeah, we're gonna, we're on board, we'll buy that stuff, and we'll get a developer in there.
Well, I would, we would love to get a developer in there, and that's, that's our, that's our intention, and it'll be much easier to get a developer in there if we got a sewer line out there.
I know, there's, well, that's where we're gonna probably hit a roadblock here.
You know.
Mike's over there.
But that's, but that's, you know, that's that's, and you know, the mushroom farm has probably got three million dollars of the skin in the game out there already.
Yeah, that's, see, that's where rumors come in, I'd heard they leased it, so they have any skin in the game, so I looked at, I looked at the property thing and then looked it up, and I even saw that they got a heck of a deal on it, yeah, they, yeah, cause if it was a business that was leased that had failed twice, that would be different.
Yeah.
Than, yeah.
Yeah, they also just bought two new trucks to, they're gonna hire their own truck drivers and deliver their own, own, own mushrooms and upgrade.
You have indigestion, don't you? No, maybe they'll get an airplane and they'll fly shrooms out.
No, but anyway, that's, could benefit, that, that could benefit the town a lot.
I think what else could benefit the town a lot is focusing on phase three, I think that, I think there's a lot of talk about it would be great to expand, but we've got just what's happened in the last month, you've got Adam's Mobile Home Court that needs to expand, and we've got the old football field that needs to expand, and there's lots of places that if somebody wants to build a home, they can approach the developers that we've already made deals with, and doesn't cost us phenomenal amounts of infrastructure, but we already have that in place. If we wanna have any engineers, though, we ought to see what it's going to cost to do Maple, to run that line, because.
Well, we already had an engineer's cost on Maple, this, and it was in the plan to move forward, why that project got stopped, and the one on, they say they're the same rated, the same, if you look at our map over there, that we, they ran out of the, it's fifty, fifty money, and we need to try to leverage this to seventy-five, twenty-five, or even ninety, ten, and this is what tying this together will help enable us to do that. And we can do a lot more with less money.
Cause just driving around town today, and we have confidence builders, and they have all this over here, the old school district building, and then we've picked up the, the old motel down there, and then we look over what's available now to build on with Adam's Mobile Home Court, and I'm going, oh my God, we've already got enough land to build houses, it would equal the size that we already have in Shoshone. And I'm between a rock and a hard spot, cause quite frankly, I'll tell you that people that supported me in the election wanted to make sure that we didn't rush into anything, and, and I hate to like hold the whole thing up, and I get heartburn and spending money and moving ahead if I don't have a clear vision of where we're headed and where we're gonna get. But of course, that's why I'm one vote out of five.
I have a question for Kyle, since I know you, how long are these studies good?
That's a good question.
Mayor, council, everybody doing? So P E R study like this with rural development can lead, like Joel said, into other phases of infrastructure improvement. So it's kind of a tough question to answer, it's similar to, like, you know, Jim's working on a master plan right now for water. Typically, they'll fund another water study about every ten years. That's maybe the closest analogy I can make to a similar P E R like this, it, what this P E R does is looks at a lot of different things as far as your infrastructure, and gives you guidance on what needs to be replaced, what's, you know, how, how much can the town actually grow before that line on Maple Street's too small, or your ponds and dosing system can't handle it, so those are some of the questions that it's, it's gonna answer, and you know, I'd say it, it, it's similar to even your other, like, town-wide master plan that you're doing, you know, as far as how long those last, it's a similar sort of thing, and so I don't know if I'm answering your question very well or not.
Is it a six month, is it six years?
I would say it probably in the six to ten year range. Just, just a, at least five, yeah, a, and like I said, the, once you've got a P E R study with rural development, you can continue using that to go for the next phase, and the next phase, and the next phase of what you're. to go for the next phase and the next phase and the next phase of what you're trying to do. So I mean, say Maple Street's one of those phases. You still have several other things in that phase three sewer that need to be replaced throughout town. So different sections of that could get broken out as your next phase and your next phase. And so those are all things that can get discussed in that P E R kind of based on that. So I don't know if that helps answer your question or not.
But it opens the door for us as rural development.
Yeah, to get that funding and like, I think that Joel's point is that, you know, with the state and SLID being stuck at that fifty fifty match, it would be nice to leverage some of your 1% funds with some funding from the feds potentially i- if you can make that work. And and make that a more sizable chunk to to bite off.
Maybe some of what Bob was getting at is when like, how long does it last? Like the new construction part down the road, that can be adjusted for inflation without having to start all over again, can't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, just things like that.
Yeah. Yeah, completely.
So there's some new toy out there that you want to put in.
I guess what what saying if we do it now, next year, if we don't move forward in a year, we may not move forward in a year. Would we be able to use it next year?
Yeah, I mean, that that opens, that that opens you up to being able to,
Right.
You know, whether you fund a west extension or you fund something else in town, that needs to be done for your your sewer infrastructure. I mean, there's benefit to doing that if the town wants to pursue rural development funding.
Rural development funding, some people shy away from it because it involves a lot of paperwork. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Federal government?
Federal funds always have more hoops to jump through. So like 1% funds are the best because you you guys make up the rules. State funds have a couple more hoops to jump through and then the feds make you jump through even more.
I would throw those today. It was incredible. But you have to go through this.
But if it saves us, you know, half a million dollars.
Just the application alone, you have to hire somebody to fill it out.
Any more questions for Kyle?
No, he's answered my question.
Jody, you brought something, you want to bring something to the table?
I'm understanding, so if you guys.
Hi, I'm Jody Lang. My question is, is so if we spend this money for this study and then we don't develop that out there, then at a later date, if when we get ready to do that, we can do that and we can apply for those funds, is that correct?
Yes.
So it's just.
My, that's my understanding.
So it's just to get it in to open up so that we would qualify for that grants, those grants without it, is that correct?
Yes, that's the the first step and and then we're available to take advantage of opportunities that may that may come up.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Instead of have to start all over again.
Okay.
Anybody questions or input? Jim?
I was gonna say to answer Councilman Zinn's question, to our knowledge, there's no expiration date on the primary engine.
I'm of the opinion we should seek bids on the who is going to develop. Because there's a lot of property in Shoshone that's been here for a lot of years and nobody has jumped to develop it. When we look at new home construction over the past 10 years, new mobile homes or manufactured homes have been brought in in the past 10 years. There's a lot of real estate sitting that nobody has chosen to develop and.
Location, location, location.
Oh, I I agree. You can move down downtown where it smells the worst or you can move in in the middle of town. I mean, that's a, that's a true statement where we're at. The point is, we don't have the who. No one's come to the council that I'm aware, except for conference builders, and in a way, we're kind of bidding against them. There's only so many homes that can be built, so many people can buy homes in Shoshone and we just don't have the who. We have the dream, we just don't have the who is gonna come developing Shoshone.
But there definitely some people that might be interested in in living west, I know several.
We ought to direct them to Tim and Mike. They're in a position to to build homes for the community, do a fantastic job. And we'd be doing them a service to say, hey, we've got two or three people that are interested. Maybe you guys can build a home for them and get our town working from the inside out.
There's also people talking about wishing there was horse properties here also, you can't do that in town. I know, like I said, I know teachers, a teacher that didn't move here because they couldn't make the horses.
We can, you know, definitely develop especially that property west to Herbst Road in the two to five acre plots for exactly that.
I hate to dominate the conversation, but we're on, here's my quandary. Is this, if we don't do it, then do we have a lost opportunity to get this finished to see if we're ever gonna develop it? But on the other hand, then we do this and it's never developed. And I'm kind of agree with Mike. I want to see something that's making it look like this is gonna come to fruition. I just spend the money now and then find out later, we just whizzed it away. Is it, you know, so I'm I'm looking at a person sure being in a no win position here. And if time wasn't such an issue, I would just, we can't table things forever, but I'm not real comfortable with where we're headed. Like I say, there's one, two, three, four, five votes there, so that's. Yeah, yeah, no, it's, yeah.
Well, I'd make a motion that we table it to further discussion, not not indefinite, but not knowing when that needs to be. I think there's a lot of uncertainty in the economy. I think the governor's cut $500 million out of the budget. I think the school is losing $780,000. I think there's just a lot of.
You missed the other one.
I missed the other one.
Conoco has put all American properties for sale.
Kind of, they did?
They did.
I didn't know it was all of them. I just thought it was this one.
No, we always told all.
Anyway, so whatever, however, officially made that, I'd make a motion that we table, table the proposals for the sewer project.
Can I have a second?
Second.
And moved in second, further discussion.
I got a question. You know, the whole reason why I was getting involved with this is so we could do something like this. Otherwise, I would have never voted to purchase this land. So my question is to you, Bob, you were on board for this. Why did we spend all of this money for absolutely no reason? If you would have put no on it, you know, I would have known you weren't gonna do it, I would have never spent the town's money. And now we got that much money involved out there without doing anything.
I see the town needs to expand, but I also understand Ron and Mike's comment. You know, how do we get the internal part of town to grow? It's like.
Does it take a hundred thousand dollars to spend to make that happen? I mean, it was a waste of money. This thing goes down and it was a waste of money. I would have never, ever done this if I'd have known that when we voted for this thing, well, let's just sit on the damn thing. That's all I gotta say.
Hello.
Can I say something without it being a conflict of interest on this?
Sure.
Go ahead. That's sorry.
Barney Sweeney, I'm not involved in any of this, I'm not making any decisions. But I do know for a fact, and this is the facts, every day we are getting calls for housing. Every day, somebody is calling for a rental list, somebody is calling for properties to purchase. There are people trying to move to this town and I'm not trying to be obstinate or cause any problems. But that is a fact. And I have a rental list right now that has one person on it that's got a rental that's ready to go right now. There is a need for some of this stuff. And there's a, I honestly feel that there is a need for us to look into this just for the general population of Shoshone.
Can I say something without going up to the podium?
Go ahead. Speak, 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 speak in your big girl voice.
Yeah, Patty Collins, um, we do have an empty three bedroom rental house and it's been empty seven months. We have not received a call from anybody that's ever rented. Just throwing it out.
Nobody, no one called, I sent somebody toward you and they never.
I, you're right, you did.
Okay.
I didn't count yours.
Oh, okay, yeah, I knew I sent somebody and I thought they went, yeah. Jody, please.
So I have a question. Bo, this is my, you can maybe answer this. So you have people that want to build out there, correct? See, people at school, teachers that have horses and stuff. So to me, and I guess I'm asking, why is it the town's responsibility to put a sewer line out there? When the mushroom plant, and I'm assuming you have a septic system? What is wrong with them folks doing that? And if we get enough people out there, then the town can put in the sewer line and those folks would have the opportunity to tap in to the sewer line. And why is it the town's responsibility to put it in and then have a developer go in and then develop it when a developer should be the one to develop that, put the sewer lines in and put the water line in and do all that? Is that not correct or am I misinformed?
The route of that sewer line doesn't even go near my place, so I don't even care about that end of it.
No, I'm, I understand that, but you.
My thing is, is we purchased the land with an idea, okay? We purchased land with an idea. We voted for it to do it. If I didn't vote for it, just to buy it and sit on it, why spend that damn money?
I understand that.
That's where, that's where, that's where issues are now huge right now. I'm.
I under, I understand that.
And I don't get too upset too much and I'm pretty pissed.
I understand that.
But as for, okay, let's say you look at horse properties, okay? The town's act does not have much into, especially if we sit there in our seniors, our senior living. If we build on this side of it, it doesn't cost us anything besides building it. If we bought it from Britain, we're like at $50,000 for that property. So basically, you know, knock off 50,000 bucks if we add, if we add on to the seniors living. You knock, you knock that off, we paid forty something thousand dollars for that property, for everything. So if we if we only paid forty seven thousand dollars for it, we could practically give the dang land away and still come way out on top. No one's gonna get land like that at that price. And you sit there, it's such a good, it's an easy commute to Riverton. And if you can sit there and get properties like that with views and everything else for less than half the price of Riverton, to me, it's it's a pretty easy deal. And then you got the prospective people out there doing the churches, doing the stores, that helps the town. That helps the town. We need a store.
I agree with you.
You know, so I'm I'm sorry, like I said, I would have never voted for this thing. If I was knowing, we're just gonna hit the brakes because all of a sudden we got cold feet and that's what it is, it's cold feet. Cold crap. Why spend a hundred thousand dollars right now?
Let me give you an example. Why spend $190,000 to buy the old main street, tear it down, call it commercial real estate? And then turn around in the same meeting and say, let's make a park.
I didn't purchase that, man. And second of all, the way that was filled, we would have had to have dug that whole thing up.
I offered to buy that property before.
That's not my deal.
I understand that.
So there, there's my, it's my answer to it.
So when we're talking about the town blowing money on stuff, we've got a nice park. That's not an argument, this isn't about the park. But that was a decision that was made by another council. Another council came in and said, we didn't like that idea, so here we are. So how much money did we throw away on that piece of property? Did we?
True, two wrongs don't make a right either though.
Understandable, so I didn't vote to purchase this property.
No, I'm not mad at you. You're you're new on the council, I get that. You have every right to vote against it, I have no issue with that. He has every right to vote against it too, but why the heck did we spend the money in the first place? That's where I'm upset. Town's got better things to do with the money besides sit on it and never do anything with it.
You know, one, one thing to sort of keep in mind that you brought up, there's maybe people don't want to live. We're just giving people more options. I I know I've talked with the school, the school is gonna be, I think, encouraging. They'd like to see more teachers living in town than what they got there. Some of the teachers may not want to live in the middle of town, maybe they want to be out there and have five acres. Maybe they want, you know, uh, I know part of the discussion of our lot size from our, from our consultant who has been doing our our master plan, our lots are probably too small. So we probably changed that when we we do that out there. But if what this does is, one thing, keep, keep in mind that we can receive grants and stuff to build sewer lines, infrastructure in the town. A private contractor cannot. A private contractor will have to add that to the price of the property if they're developing a private contractor. We can try to keep our housing more affordable for people in town if we use our grant money to help develop our, help our develop our town. If we don't help develop that, now, we haven't seen, seen much growth for a long time. Try to help spur some of this by developing some of this land and and putting sewer lines in, water lines in is a way to bring, develop, gets developers attention. I've had two other developers talk to me about potential land out here. I mean,
Let's do Tim and Mike a favor and develop the football field for them. Let's put utilities out there to make it easier, let's do roads, let's do stuff.
We, we, we have sewer and water, you know, they're accessible to.
And let's make a plan of how to develop the football field. Put in a road.
What if someone don't want to live there, they prefer to live out of town? We're given, we're given more options.
They're to live out of town, we're talking about.
No, I'm not gonna, no, this would be in town. No, this be inside the city limits, town is Shoshone.
Call for a question.
Anybody got any further discussion?
I do.
Hey, please do.
If I can do that, I don't know.
No, you can.
Robert's Rules of Order. First, thank you, Marty, Marty, because that's the kind of information I need to know. Thanks, Patty.
And our rentals are listed on the town.
And I'm gonna make a politically incorrect statement to probably get some people P O. We can't stonewall this forever and we have to get some closure on this soon. But on the other hand, we need to get our poop in a group. My personal perception as far as get some of these questions answered. I really want closure on this by the end of the month, personally. So that might explain my vote here in a minute.
So the motion is to table this indefinitely? Or we, we gotta, did I hear an amendment coming from Ron?
I didn't know how you made your motion.
I made the motion.
Who, yeah, my listening skills, aren't they great? Was your motion to table it to the next meeting or indefinitely?
Indefinite. I think it opens up an opportunity, there's people that want to develop, let them, let's have them approach the council. Have these people, these developers come to us with their plan, because they might say, you know, what would be great if we're gonna develop it? Let them have some feedback instead of saying, congratulations, we dropped the line on the ground. And they say, oh, you know, we actually would have liked something different since we're the developers. Find out where the interest is, if there is interest.
Since it isn't the ordinance or resolution or anything, then if, say, in 30 days, we say, no, bringing that back to the table, it's been tableed indefinitely, but we, we can still bring that back to the table, of course, whenever, can we?
We could still bring them back next meeting.
No, that's what I mean, so, yeah.
Yeah, we can still bring them back next meeting indefinitely, then set a date.
I've done enough stupid things without doing another one, so. You seconded that motion, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor of tabling choosing an engineering firm? Or moving forward with this, but which would be choosing an engineering firm to start the P E R? Move it on to to a future time? It's dead, it is indefinitely postponed, which means we can still, we'll still bring it up sometime in the future.
Yeah, I wanted to, yeah.
Okay, all in favor of that motion, does everybody understand that good enough? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Aye. Pardon? Motion defeated. Okay.
Now what do you do?
Does anybody wanna, does, does anybody wanna move forward on phase one? Which would be select an engineer for the P R D? Do we wanna discuss our, our engineer bids first? Or how, how do we, how does the council wanna handle this?
Well, I'll make a comment. The council spoke, the way I felt is now put aside. So personally, I, if the council wishes to go ahead, you know, I'll support that, I'm not gonna torpedo what we've already decided. I don't know if that's appropriate to say that. The feelers are hurt a little bit. So how, how do we do this? Because, I mean, we're not bound by law to take the lowest bid or highest bid, or I don't know how.
No, I, I contacted our attorney, we, like I said, we followed YDOT's template for guidance and we scored based on only, because we had no, we hadn't looked at any of the bids. We based only on, on qualifications. H D R was the, was the, the firm that, that the four of us sat down that composite score, it was, it was very, very close. All four was well qualified firms. H D R was the, had the highest, highest, that we ranked them the highest on qualifications. But we had a wide variety in, in, in bids.
Absolutely. Yeah.
So.
You see, I'm still learning, I know that's not these guys' fault. But I wasn't even aware that you need to even take bids for professional services, for one thing. But I guess we are, uh-oh, I can see some.
There's currents back there.
There are, maybe, sorry. You know, I don't know, if you do take bids, then are you obligated? What's the obligation as far as?
You can look at budget and try to negotiate.
But I mean, legal obligation, I don't wanna get crosswise with the auditor or somebody. Just, like, we don't have to take the lowest.
No, we don't have to take the lowest, we don't have to take, take the highest. We can, if any, somebody is not, not qualified, is not qualified, you can exclude them. But I believe we all agreed, everybody had, had qualifications. The bids, the bids, the bids all, all addressed our issues.
I know this might sound stupid, so can I make a motion right now to like award that to H D R? And then if it fails, just go down the list till one of them flies? Or is it making more sense to discuss it?
Nope, that's, that's, that's exactly. Okay, I got a motion to.
Maybe I should go from the bottom, I'll start from the top down, or you can. I'll make a motion, we award the bid to H D R, see if it dies for lack of a sec.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved in second, do we have any discussion?
Yeah, that's, that's double from the lowest one, this. It's not like a statement where you have to take the most qualified engineering for, is that correct?
Correct, I, correct.
I just wanted to get us moving. You can go, hell no, if you want.
I don't know, I'm ignorant about all the requirements of these things.
Yeah, that's, well, that's why I asked, because I don't want us to get jammed up legally. And on the other hand, I don't want us to do something that's unprofessional, unethical to any of these people sitting in the audience either.
It seems to me like, are we after rocket science answers?
No.
No.
So then on the one hand, it would say, if we're, if we're going to go down the road, we should go as affordable as possible. Considering that they're all qualified, they all met parameters. And if this is just a, this is where you can dig your line, this is where the stuff can go, then, then we're being more responsible for town's money saying, we're gonna move forward, but.
That's why I either withdraw my motion or let it fail and then somebody nominating makes a motion for, say, Gore. I don't know what's the most palatable way to do that. You guys are dealing with a new venture.
Well, just all three motions, bring it out of the twenty thousand, you know.
I can do that.
If they're all qualified, I mean, they're all liable for their, what they're saying, so I agree. Change your motion and.
I did check with this city attorney on our, on, 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 on our obligation. If, uh, he said nothing because we're a municipality, not, not that we could try to negotiate a rate, but if everything, if it's out of, it's out of our budget.
Yeah.
And, uh, that we could, because it's out of budget, we could turn, turn it down because of budget or we could move forward. That's up, that's up to us if we wanna go.
Well, I don't want the perception to be.
We go with the most expensive one.
I don't want the perception to be that I'm this clear, responsible and trying to award something to somebody that's twice as much either. So can I amend that motion and go with, say, Gore and Associates then? Can I do that? I don't know how that works, or do we just?
I'll second your amendment.
Okay.
Okay, been moved and seconded that we award this to Gore and Associates for not to exceed nineteen thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars. Been moved in second. Any further discussion? None being, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passed.
And just working on it real quick, I just, uh, answer, answer, Councilman Zen's question.
Okay.
That he had, so I can screen share.
Oh my God, we're not, we're just now getting to the consent agenda? Somebody needs to make a motion and just pass the consent.
Council meeting, uh, September twenty-second. I brought up the maintenance C D that was transferred to the general fund of which Councilman Zen added ten thousand dollars to the line item for the backup, which is line item one fifty forty-five, which passed.
I saw that.
The rest of the money was not allocated of that. And on November tenth. Long meeting. Uh, Councilman Zen moved for sixty thousand dollars to be allocated for the purchase of a road grader, which was the same line item as the previous ten thousand dollars. Remaining balance was left unallocated from that original C D. Just clarifying the question that was raised earlier. Do we have allocated remaining funds from that transferred to the general fund?
Okay.
Thank you.
Consent items, everybody had a chance to review the bills from January twenty-seventh to February ninth?
Yeah, I have some questions. The range telephone bill for medical clinic phone, here two dollars, or here two dollars and so on cents. Is that a one-time fee hookup or what? Or is that gonna be a monthly fee?
So our lease agreement with the medical clinic is, it's in our name and they reimburse us for the cost of it.
Okay.
I've got a question. On my credit card, the charges that are on there, I haven't used it, what's up with my credit card?
That was.
Your wife?
So your card was used.
One nine hundred.
Yeah. That was for the town's cell phones that we had purchased for the equipment from, is what it was used for. Only, that's been since rectified that now departments actually have credit cards, so we don't have to.
Nope, that's fine, you just had to know.
Yeah.
So how are, why are we getting service charges on our credit cards? So we pay the bills off every month?
We shouldn't have any service charges, where are you looking at?
Um, so here's what I hear. Financial charge.
Okay, so that was last year, um, when I first, uh, we had, in the budget year, we had those late charges and the bills weren't being paid on time. We got that all caught up, so that was where those finance charges came from. And that was back in April, or sorry, uh, for my time, but that was resolved.
I just noticed we have these finance charges. And then another question I have, Black Hills Energy, uh, we have two, you know, twenty-five hundred dollar bills.
Okay. Black Hills Energy?
Black Hills Energy, one for thousand one and one fifteen sixty-eight.
And so that is two different, uh, checks that were written separately, uh, ones for the senior center or senior housing, I'm sorry. The rest is for the town, so there, there are two separate bills. That's why they're not just one for the town, because one comes out of the senior housing.
Does any of this go, include the medical center?
No.
I thought we're paying the utilities there.
It, well, not on this bill.
Okay.
It, it will in the future, but not on this.
Okay. The last one I have question is on the coffee machine charge, they're going to the top. Is that for just replacements or repairs or brandy coffee machine?
That was that, uh, during our budget, quarterly budget, when we addressed that, that was for that new coffee machine.
So it's a new one?
Yeah, that's a one-time charge that we, uh, was approved.
That's my question.
Just for my information, I mean, I know it's legit. I see six thousand six hundred and whatever and thirteen dollars for internet from T-Mobile. How much do these guys surf the web around here?
It shows internet, um.
That's also for cell phones, isn't it?
That, that was for all the cell phones that were replaced with the town.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I'm sorry, I knew that was for.
The one-time cost, that was also a part of that, uh, meeting in December.
Well, you know, perception, reality thing. Because that's, that's my understanding, right? You went with that carry and replaced all the cell phones and.
Because, yeah, our cell phones were fifteen years old and so we switched from, uh, in the summer meeting, we switched from, uh, junior wireless to T-Mobile. And then we actually bought the phones instead of leased the phones or rent the phones.
Oh, sure, then you got a better plan.
And then through the police department, um, I was able to get, uh, the heroes program they have, which is bill monthly fees.
Cool, I always thought that's maybe what that was.
Yeah, buddy's cellphone actually works now.
He won't answer it.
Of course, are you playing on it right now?
Oh, that's what I dropped out.
Oh.
Okay. And have a motion to approve, we went that far. We've already had a motion in a second, we're in discussion, weren't we? Were we? No, we haven't had a motion. I have a motion to approve the, approve the, the bills, January twenty-seventh to February ninth, twenty twenty-one.
Geez, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda so we don't have to go through the minutes. But if you just want one for the bills.
Man, I'm, I'm happy with that.
Yeah, I know, we'll do, we'll get this.
I'd love to do that.
I'll second both.
Okay, been moved in second, we approved the bills. Any further discussion?
I did.
None being, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Everybody had a chance to review the minutes, uh, January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. Anybody see any discrepancies, anything left out, additions needed? Can I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Can I have a second? Approve the minute, January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one.
Second.
Now, anybody have some discussion? No discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass building permit for Rick Catlin?
Did I miss that on here, which, which Rick building?
It's an addition. Forge.
Oh, good. Oh, there it is, I found it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anybody?
I would move that we allow that, that we issue that building permit.
Can I get a second? Been moved in second that we approved the building permit for Rick Catlin. All in favors, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Unfinished business. We have anything from the audience that I've missed that someone wants to speak now? Jim, do we have you down somewhere else or? Did you wanna talk about the water system at all?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilman. To brief you on the, first of all, on the TV work for well number two. We got the, got the video on that. Without going into details, that well is much the same today as it was forty years ago, when quite possibly fifty years ago. The casing doesn't show any signs of deterioration or joints separating or anything else. And our suggestion is to just keep right on using it. The casing appears to be in decent shape from what we can tell. The bottom hundred feet of that well is filled with sediment and sand that has come in over the years. But in, I believe nineteen sixty-eight, the level of that sediment was about, found to be about the same it is today. So, nothing's changed in forty years, keep using it.
Yeah, the bottom is about the same fifty years ago then.
Yeah.
Yeah, sixty-eight.
So, um.
That's good news.
That's real good.
Yes, it is, that's, that's your best, most consistent producing well. And, uh, we can get into it later on, but you've got a lot of other issues with water system that are of a higher priority. So, uh, let's address them first, would be our recommendation. And, uh, set aside funds to eventually replace well number two. So, we're continuing to work on, on the water master plan. I don't have anything, uh, specific to report on it.
Okay.
So.
Appreciate the information on the well.
Yeah, that's good news, we thought.
You bet. Overwatch, uh, Life Box. Life box. I guess I was seeking.
Okay.
Permission to request a. A grant, or give everybody a good chance to review. What was proposed? Do you like to open up discussion here first?
Yeah.
Okay.
I read all your stuff. I pretty much skipped that. That part. But. You talked about people watching your programs. Schools traditionally run about ten months from mid-August to mid-June. What are your employees going to do during those? Summertime, when schools traditionally do not run.
You still have school programs going on. You've got summer schools going on. You've got.
They're still charging the same amount because they're not being used in all the classrooms.
Correct, we would. Yes. Yes, because it would it would continue to run. They could still use the. The boxes, the panic button's still there. Somebody's going to be answering the line if perhaps somebody actually.
Ron, would you identify yourself?
Oh, sorry, Ron Cunningham.
Thank you.
Ron, didn't you guys say that you guys have talked with the Landers School about it?
Yes, in fact, we're on the agenda for. The next school council meeting or whatever it is. That's to see if they're interested in placing the boxes in there for the pilot program.
Have you guys reached out to show the audience?
I have. I haven't got any word back from the superintendent. I tried several times, but no word yet. Being that it will be no cost to schools, I'm I'm sure they're going to be all for it, but. Until we actually get a box and show them what it does and stuff like that, once the engineering's done and we get a prototype of it, then I plan on taking it there and showing them.
See, again, this is this grant, we would we would just sponsor you. It was not costing town any money. For to apply for a grant, which could or could not be approved by the Business Council.
Correct.
Correct. And no cost to the, no cost to the town, but. They've. Put your presentation to the Business Council, and if they felt it was a good, if they, if the Business Council felt it was a good project. Then they would award you a grant for the engineering, and if if they didn't, they wouldn't.
That's the hopes at least, yes.
Right, I mean, that that's the, so, you know, we're.
So right now, we're really focused on phase one of this. It's just getting money to get the engineering done. That's that's all we're asking.
And it doesn't hurt the town?
Does not hurt the town at all.
I'll make the motion that we move forward.
We've got any more questions? Okay, we got a second.
I do. I I do. Well, I can discuss. You can discuss if you have some motions made too.
Yeah, we can, either way. You have a second?
If you have a motion in a second, but I didn't.
Okay, been moved in second.
I didn't further.
Who seconded?
Nobody seconded.
Nobody seconded.
I thought you did, Ron.
No.
Okay. Further discussion before we move forward then.
More confusion on my part. I I read your proposal, and then I also got on the website for the Wyoming Business Council. Their business ready loans, business ready grants, all that kind of stuff. And. So the grant, I didn't read all of that part. I looked at loans and stuff further down the road where this stuff has to be collateral, has to be put up and all that. But explained to me, so. It's like. We can partner with.
Well, we're not really partnering.
We can allow them access. I read that part too.
Okay.
To where they can get that. Just an outright grant.
Right.
Okay, and do they have to have, I mean, is there a proposal for X amount of dollars? And they say, we'll give you a grant for this amount of money. But you have to spend that amount of money and show us the deliverables, and you have to do like twenty five percent or.
Well, that's going to be all in the grant that that comes forward.
I just, well, all I'm saying is worst case scenario, I don't want the town to owe anybody a dime.
No, no, the town, the town, the town. Yeah, the town would not be involved with this other than just sponsoring, saying, we support their idea.
Yeah, that's the way I read that.
Yeah, to see if they think it's a good idea.
And it's going on all over the state.
Yeah.
But they can't get access without the support.
Correct.
Okay.
And that's all, that's all we're doing. We're just saying that we like the idea. But it'd be up to the Business Council to do whatever they're going to do.
Yeah, they might just say no.
They may say no, they may say yes. I mean, it's 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 a, we're just saying it sounds like a good idea. And if it does develop and go forward, Ron and John have made a commitment to develop here in Shoshone.
Right, plus if it, I mean, the further it goes, you're going to get further grants with schools wanting grants. Possibly get it into the schools for free, so. I mean, there'll be other other grants, but the the whole point is coming to Shoshone is to actually have it located in Shoshone.
This sort of maybe, phase one was sort of the. You do have a patent on it.
Yes.
That I would have think long and hard if the town ever had to. Offer up collateral for a loan or something, but that's down the road.
Yeah, that has nothing to do with this.
Right.
I guess. My thinking is that as a councilman, I mean, we all want business here. If this isn't going to hurt the town whatsoever by moving this next step. Why wouldn't we do it? At least take that step and let you see how this rolls. I mean, if we say no to this, then we're not a business friendly council, I can tell you that.
Yeah, I've made that comment when I was. During the campaign is making economic development is almost impossible. The last thing I want to do is stifle it when it looks like it can happen on its own.
So one question that was brought up to me regarding no cost to the town, I think it was a kind of a Snyder remark, but it was.
Maybe, maybe not.
It's wanting to know if. Since you're free, apparently. Any, almost like the the perspective was, are you the designated person to to go for grants for anybody that wants a business in the town of Shoshone? From the premise of we're a business friendly.
That's what I hoped it would be.
We we, if they were banging down my doors and I was burning a candle, midnight oil, whatever the phrase is. I would probably come to council and and say. I'm overwhelmed, we need more help to that effect right now. I just need to thirsty.
But if they came, so their their thought was if they came to council, did a presentation, and they said, we hear Chris does great grant work. To get the, I mean, at what point do you?
We've had another business, local business in town come to us. They've got some things going on right now. We're offering to work with them and and help them. To do that right now. One of the one of the things, we need a restaurant. We have someone interested in putting a restaurant in Shoshone.
And. Short answer would be. Yeah, I would honor them all. Other municipalities actually have people that do just that, and so it'd be no different. It's just we're smaller, so. We'd expect our volume to be less. I mean, if it got overwhelming. That's all I was doing was writing grants, and that would be a problem.
Then again, we'd talk talk about it with the council if it went that far. If the town supports it, we need to. We'd be moved forward, just like we're doing this right now. I think we'd love to help. Especially local business here do something.
I read through the proposal. Ran lots of numbers. I'm going to take less as more and say, I think you're right on the premise of we're going to do an opportunity to let them sponsor, to be an entrepreneur. And. In my personal opinion, I think we'd be better off just left unsaid, but I think the direction you're going, I don't know what, it's not free because it takes Chris his time. Chris is not cheap because he's good at what he does.
And and we did state that, that's what it was costing. It was costing a little money our time. I'm almost free.
You're almost free.
And I'll help also.
We know your salary. It's dirt cheap.
It's reasonable.
Chris isn't so dirt cheap.
No, he's getting paid, he's getting paid almost what he's worth. Not quite, but almost. I'm probably overpaid, but that's another discussion. But, you know, that's. Any any other, any other good comments? Any other, any other ideas? Do we have had a, we haven't had a motion yet then?
Yes.
We had a motion, but no second.
We never had a second. So so the motion failed for no second, so now can I have a motion?
I'm going to motion again.
Can I have a second now? Okay. Been moved in second. Do we have any further discussion? None being all in favor of supporting Overwatch, they'll sponsor them for the for a grant. Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passed. Congratulations, Ron, the next step. Have to start working on that. Community room.
Before we go on to that, I need, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda.
Always.
To add library onto new business.
Okay, get a second.
Second.
Been moved in second, moved the library on the new business, any 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 discussion? None being all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Yeah, we already did the west, already did that one. I just got it wrong quarter. New business, community room. The town's been approached to. Rent the community room four nights a week. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Saturday from five P M. to nine P M. And they have offered to pay the town a thousand dollars a month. We presently don't charge anything, and that's what I told them, and they said that they would be willing to pay a thousand dollars a month. They want to, those four nights, they would like to have 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 them reserved, and they're willing to pay a thousand dollars a month.
How often is it being used?
Well.
Who's it be?
I say. They would be would be the Church of Christ.
They are over there right now.
Okay, yeah, yeah. I'm ignorant. I don't know who they is.
Yeah, I I'm, I hear you.
See, here, this is our records, what was the, was used last year and.
Over to the end, Tuesday, Wednesday.
What did? Then there's quite a bit of Church of Christ used quite a bit that they're not in here to put once, but that was, I thought it was three days.
What days did you say they were?
Chill days again?
Or Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays, five P M. to nine P M.
Okay. I can get up before that one.
And they would be willing to pay a thousand dollars a month to do that.
How long?
They would they would like it for a year.
So that means we'll never have another Saturday event in Shoshone?
Well, that's.
But we we have venues.
That's what I was wondering, like availability of the.
The way, you know, S R D building and.
That's what I mean.
Yeah, in particular that and the senior center some.
So there's two, and the town gets twelve thousand.
The week, yeah, we have two annual, we have two annual events, and then on Saturday, pardon?
The senior center is not open.
I know, not now. Not now. But hopefully this is going to change in the next three or four months, but they have, we have two annual events that we hold there on a Saturday. The the bunny hunt and Shoshone days. Last year was used for Saturdays all year.
Budget cuts and everything else, getting the town out of twelve thousand bucks. I don't see how we couldn't work around this.
But. But it's. But we had, other than not counting them, we had one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Not not, see that doesn't include all the Friday nights, or does it? Or does it? I don't see the Friday nights, but maybe that didn't, when did that started? In December, we didn't have that on. But without the Friday nights. Farmer's Market, what it was, it was used nine times last year. Total. So. Gary, please.
Will the mushroom farm, because we'll, we have Shoshone days. You know, can can we work with the mushroom farm to allow us to have that weekend there?
That would be between you and them. I, they would. They want, they would like their Saturday Saturday nights. But. You also work with S R D. Okay.
We made an agreement with the people who started it up. Farmer's Market, if they, somebody needed it that day, they said they're food or name. Why can't we do the same thing with these people? Or they're going to be that inflexible?
Well.
I mean, Farmer's Market, yeah, we'll switch face if we need to, if somebody wants to, some special event.
They have their services Saturday night. You know, I think that is.
I'm not talking just about Saturday night, I'm talking about other items. I know there's been weddings in there. So. Are they flexible? Gary said, are they flexible? Say, hey, we're.
I I would have to discuss that with them. They 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 asked. They they wanted to reserve their room that. They're right now, they're not paying, they're not paying nothing. They come in, they offer to pay a thousand a month, but they wanted to reserve those nights.
What if we table it? So you have time to discuss it with them, see if they're flexible on their days.
What do they want to use it for? I I don't know anything about it.
They have their church services there, prayer meetings.
For each, for four nights? Is it the same, it's the same activity essentially?
Well, they they have, they have, they they attend church, I believe, Wednesdays and Saturdays. They have two services, and then I think Tuesdays and Thursdays, they have prayer services. That they that they Bible study and prayer services that they they use also in their dinner, yeah, that we can all believe. But but anyway, that was that was that was that was that was their their request. Because they need a larger building. Yes, Pat, please.
I'm Pat Collins. And when the fire department decided to open that up to the community, it was for the community to use, not for one. It's been used for weddings, funerals, the whole nine yards. So your little list there is only good. You said for one year?
That was for one year.
This has been going on for years, and it's been. Going on Saturday nights, Friday nights, whatever you want to call them, but it was open for the community to use. And that's the way it was designed. I mean, that actually, that room is like I told you during the. People running for office is actually. Designed for, they could put two fire trucks over there. But at that time, we didn't need two more fire trucks, so we made it into a workout room for the firemen. Training area. Well, then the rec district approached us about using it for. Well, then the rec district approached us about using it for the community, for wrestlers, everything else in the community. So. I think it should stay open to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
We have part of the community willing to spend a thousand dollars a month for juice that got used. Nine, ten times, pardon?
Well, if they're gonna actually rent it, then what would you do, a resolution to rent it to them for such and such days for a year? So you'd handle that?
Yeah, just a, or a more, a motion to prove.
Okay, yeah, I didn't know what you'd need.
We'd enter into a contract with them.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
And I, I just, we're, it's not getting used a whole lot. Thousand dollars a month wouldn't, wouldn't hurt the city coffers.
What about the church right next to it? Is it, is it used anymore?
The Catholic church? Do they, I don't know if they hold any meetings there at all.
I've not, I've not seen vehicles, I think the last I saw was, it was in every other week, it was on, on the sign, but I don't have seen traffic. I just wonder if they would, if that's been approached, if they're looking for a church setting, well, it seems like a heck of an opportunity for church setting.
I don't know if they've looked at, looked at anywhere else, they're looking for something to, to lay, bill, I just. They thought it might help the community a thousand a month. But I told them they're welcome to use it, as they have been, for nothing.
Hey, I'm kind of with Bo on this one as far as find out a little more table for, do you want meetings, is that what you want to table?
Yeah, let's fill the next meeting and see, you know, like on Shoshone days, if they can work with Shoshone, and we start Shoshone days, and that's still used.
And you made that, it was, I'm actually hearing it here in my right ear. Did you make a motion? I know. Did you, you made, I thought I heard you make a motion.
Yeah, just find out if you're willing to. You know, work a little bit.
Because I'd second that, and then we can just, do you want a table until next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
They've got a motion and a second? And a second to table this till our, till our next meeting? Whether we rent to the, the community room to the Church of Christ for a thousand dollars a month? Any further discussion?
Just reaching out, see if, you know.
Sure, yeah, I'll reach out to them.
What part of the community room are they using? Are they using kitchen? Are they who's responsible for cleaning?
There were.
Things that I have to have asked before I can say yes or no.
We can, just, just like they're doing now, they clean up every time. I think they've been very good tenant, I mean.
So, I need more answers.
Sure.
I need to test the waters with the community. I think it's fair, it's, it's community room.
I'm gonna visit with them. Trying to get a sense of how the community feels.
Although I have a pretty good idea.
Any, for any further, any further discussion? None being all in favor to set the table, table till next meeting, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We, the police report?
Where, why we're in library?
Oh, library, okay, we have. Okay. Library, you brought the motion, what do you want to talk about?
So short and sweet, I visited with Wanda, she talked about the program that are going on at library, she talks about the hours that she works, et cetera, et cetera. I would just like to make a motion that we extend the hours of operation from twenty hours a week to thirty-two hours a week for the library.
Get a second, I'll second that. Any further discussion? I, I got some questions. What justification?
So based on my conversation with her, based on my conversation with some of the community members regarding the library, I think it's viewed as an asset that is underutilized. The, she has some conflict of times as far as some people like to come earlier, some people would be like later, she does her absolute best to accommodate that. My conversation with her was she was in favor of having that latitude to extend her hours, she didn't know if it would be doing one Saturday a month, or coordinating with families that would, would bring children at a set Saturday for a four-hour activity once a month, or, but giving her the latitude, she knows best to open that service to the community again.
Yeah, her, her and Chris could work that out. Okay, any, any other discussion?
One of my things, library is that I still don't like how we don't work with the other libraries in Fremont County. If we work with the, if we work with the other libraries, well, we could use their books, they use ours. Our town pays taxes to do that. I would be more apt to that, but it just, that doesn't ever happen, I mean, if we can get that done, I'm all for it, I'm fine with it. You know, I did, I think that's a huge thing for our town, is that we should be able to get buy other books besides what we have here. And we're all paying taxes for it, you know?
I didn't go into the details on, on anything to do with that.
No, I was just bringing that up, yeah, I figured that, yeah, this wasn't, you know, on you or nothing, you know, an opinion. You know, I just, I think if, you know, this library was forward, and that's something that maybe us as a council get done, you know, it's just, it's just something we need to, to look at, I mean, what do you think on that? I've heard that question brought up. That was Jennifer Shannon, I love bills. T V. Part of it was cost to join the state library association and stuff. Uh, I don't remember all the details, but it was quite expensive to join the wild star, not wild star. By only company, interlibrary loan and stuff, and to change all her. I don't know how she does, maybe computer stuff. Yeah, I'm not sure, but I think, I think she's been reached out to, I don't know. I mean, Joel, I don't know if you know more on that, I just, I just always wondered that, because my wife has always wondered. I've asked her that same question, and I can't answer that.
You know. Almost a year, over a year and a half ago, I did, did offer to try to go to the county commissioners and and try to establish some link between them, but Wanda wasn't in favor of that. Didn't want it. But I did, I did offer, don't know if I'd have done any good, but I was mad at how the county, how the county treated Wanda, how they treated our library. I was pretty, pretty upset, I went over with a meeting, Riverton, and I was pretty, pretty upset when I left there. Because I felt that we got the shorts, short straw, we weren't treated good. But maybe Wanda was tired of mess, I don't know, but she didn't want me to move forward, so I, I didn't, I not reached out to the state a couple times, the state librarian. But I know, or I don't know if we're getting much use, see, down with the new computers we put in there? Because we upgraded computers, and we put in some, because our computers were getting pretty old, and we upgraded, put some, some good computers we put in there to try to enhance our online presence.
Okay, and that wasn't anything against your motion, because I'm fine with the motion, I just, I wanted to say while I was on it.
I think her conversation with her, bless her heart, she does something that, I said, you know, Wanda, if you quit, I don't know what the fate would be at the library. I said, but as long as you're willing and able and happy, like, and she puts a smile on her face, the way she goes, and and a little bit of support she gets from the community, I think goes a long way with, with her. She expressed other, just other thoughts in the, in the conversation that we had, that don't necessarily contain her right now, but but I thought at the end of it all, it's someone who said, yes, I would like to do this. From the economic side of things, it shouldn't change very much as far as budget concerns, should be, Chris would know more about what it would cost, I think we're good on our budget right now, but maybe the community won't take full advantage of it, but for a few, they might. She's pretty happy about the visitor center and what that seems to mean, it seems more during the summertime, the extra hours will help the community as a whole, the winter time's a little bit slow.
I think with the school moving where it did, I think cut down the traffic library quite a bit, I think. I believe there used to be, it used to walk across the street. Yeah.
And there are a couple families that moved that were avid users. Had it gone back.
Been moving. Okay, been moved and second, we've been in discussion, any further discussion?
I have some questions from the, or comments from the audience, okay, she doesn't have a speaker, so I'll just relay what she stated. She stated that she was part of the other library systems in Fremont County, and the Fremont County library system decided not to have the surrounding libraries be a part of them, so the state could no longer have us. That's her comment. And I believe Jennifer Shannon wanted to comment as well.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
Um, so another thing that Wanda does do for the community, if folks come in and are looking for certain books, she does do her very best at calling around even to other libraries to see if we can get those books in for our patrons, so I think that's something that other than, you know, like she said, the other libraries took us away, but she still does her very best and is willing to try to get what patrons are looking for.
Thank you. Any, any further, any other discussion?
I was going to say something, I'm gonna sit here deciding whether or not I should, but I'm gonna, like, I visited with Wanda and her mom one day about libraries. They don't share my opinion. I'm one of those guys that's technology oriented, and someday I believe that libraries are gonna become dinosaurs, and quite frankly, I wouldn't pitch fit if it was closed. Okay? And boy, have I heard from the community and the people that supported me in that election, and part of it is, is I'm supposed to represent them, not my personal opinion. And I have had some people in the community, like, read me the riot act, some of them I used to work with. So, you know, I just want you to know that there's a lot of support from the community to extend those hours. Back that little, I can't believe Cindy Moravich hit me in the chest, she did. So, I mean, you said what rationale, I think the community wants it, but I could be wrong.
Any further discussion?
Well, I think if we keep pushing library forward, I think we need to look at like you, like he's saying, they're turning into dinosaurs.
Yeah.
So I'm not saying, not yet, but let's, let's move forward with it, maybe look at grants and stuff to get some virtual libraries going. Now, same total virtual, everybody's got computers. But I've been to other small towns, my little small town, that's what they did over there, and it was about thirty people more than what we have here.
That's one of the reasons we bought the three new computers. Yeah.
We got, we got, we gotta move on with it.
Yeah.
You're right, they're, they're nice, no matter how you look at it. But you gotta be open, because some of them don't have computers.
Yeah.
But if you, if you can get into virtual some, then that opens up everyone.
So in this case, I need to represent the community. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Now, or please.
I can speak. Just a few quick things, on staffing, Officer O'Neil had actually begun his training, so he has been accepted into Douglas at the, I'm in law enforcement academy, and he started Monday, he'll graduate April twenty first, twenty twenty one, which I believe I brought up last time. So Sergeant Smith and I will begin commencing twelve-hour rotating patrol shifts, so we can maintain seven days a week coverage. The intent is also to hire a part-time officer to fill the active patrol coverage in the meantime until O'Neil graduates, however, I just want to reiterate that we still will respond twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. So we haven't lost that ability, it's just losing one officer and going to twelve-hour shifts, kinda best we can do, until I can find a part-time officer to kind of double those hours a little bit.
But you're still scheduling an on-call.
Yes.
Between you, sure.
Yeah, and so as what, the twelve-hour rotating schedules, uh I'm not gonna give the exact hours of operation, because that would really be helpful, but there'll be some, twice a days, you know, varying shifts, we can come out for six hours and have, try and select the days of the week where it's less activities, where we'll be a little more selective in how we allocate those, we'll be split shift essentially, what we'll do, or we can, try and make it as effective as possible, until we find a, a part-time officer to fill some of those gaps, and it's help, you know. Luckily, it's in the, you know, the slower portion of the year overall, and the traffic's starting to pick up a little bit, but we'll have it back before summer gets here, so. And then just a summary of twenty twenty. Uh, it's a little bit of upheaval, and a little bit of change that was going on last year, something you might have noticed with COVID, I guess. The total fines and fees the police department collected was a hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars in twenty twenty. Of that, the Shoshone Police Department recorded six arrests for DUI, four arrests for warrants, three arrests related narcotics. We also responded to six calls for domestic assault, eleven calls for disorderly conduct, twelve calls for property crime, which includes vandalism, theft, property destruction, kind of all incorporated within property crimes, and seven calls for assault and battery, it's general assaults, non-family related. We also responded to four calls for weapons offenses, one involving an aggravated assault. Our clearance rates for twenty twenty. When I say clearance rates, those are reports of activity that was cleared and solved, final disposition given, and referred to prosecution or depending on, it's a very, uh, property crimes, our clearance rate was sixty-seven percent, national average is seventeen percent. A lot of that happened to do with our smaller population, so we have a little bit more knowledge about some of the people involved in some of those things, so it helps clearance rates versus a major metropolitan area, or even land or Riverton, which has a much lower clearance rate for property crimes. Uh, crimes against person, which would involve everything from rape down to assault and battery. Our clearance rate was sixty-two percent, and national average taken together is fifty-two percent. So, again, that comes down to a smaller population, a little bit easier to find, we did have some transits that come through, we do get calls for that, and obviously sometimes people don't want to speak, there's lots of reasons that we can't clear crimes against person. You might report something, and we show up, bothering two other people that were not related to you, you know, one of them wants to speak, we can't solve the crimes, that's why sometimes crimes against person isn't a hundred percent or higher, but it's a I try to group them all together, because we don't have a lot of the other calls, like murder and stuff here, thank God. And so overall. And so overall. Pretty close to property crimes clearance rate was significantly higher is because of that. I'm not sure what Landers and Riverdies are, but I can get those numbers if you're curious to see what our regional numbers are on those from last year.
Hey, one thing real quick, Chris, uh, one thing that kind of props to you and. Police Department and I still have one kid that's in high school and so I talk to a lot of kids that are in town. And the kids in town are. Very aware of the presence of a police department and so they're not as frequent flyers going down the alleys drinking and partying through town because. They're scared because of the consequences. So, just wanted to bring that up because I've had the kids tell me I'm angry. Too many police in town. To me, that's a good. We've all seen them staggering through town and everything else and it's just to me.
I had had a citizen come talk to me that uh. He said, the opinion, he said, well, you might think I'm anti-police, but I'm not. I'm just anti some policeman because of their tactics and how how they operate. He complimented, he's a resident, he's showing he complimented our police department on. On their. On the style that that they use. The community policing getting out, patrol the back streets, talking to people and and doing all of that and and he just. In fact, I thought he was anti-police, but he assured me he's not, but he did compliment the, or PD and and not only Chris, but the whole PD. Thought they were doing a pretty good job uh in towns, it's it's good to hear, to hear positive stuff. Like that. We had a, yeah, okay, that's not on my report, anything else?
On the SRO, also lots of compliments from the kids.
Yeah, he's a. Heck of an asset.
I've never heard one kid say I think.
School gets most of the credit, but we didn't fight for that to get the funding and everything.
Yeah, whoever gets it, he should. Definitely a great asset.
Staffing wise, like going back to that, uh, this summer we'll have him available on patrol, um, the school data session, unfortunately. He's in a system right now, so he's not available as unless we have emergencies.
Sure. Yeah, that was, that was, that was a good partnership between the town and the school district that pulled that off. Cooperation. Anything else? I'll try not to be too long, we've been long enough. Oh, buddy, I forgot, buddy, public works. Get in a hurry, buddy.
I just got a couple of short meanings.
Thank you, buddy.
Part of it was over the the camera in the well too.
Right.
Which the guy, the camera, actually said it looked good for the age, so. I went ahead and had him put it back together, so we had sufficient water to town in case something did ever happen, you know. And uh. With this study, we decided that we had needed them water meters, the flow meters in them wells.
Yeah.
So I have ordered mag meters for them, so. And also back in town, we've been talking about reading through the winter months, which I think we need to do, just like through the water study. It says we can't compare for.
Right.
A water loss. With talking with rural water, you know, a lot of our end end cores here. Some of our water loss could be through our meters, these meters are over twenty years old. They're at their life, is what I've been being told by rural water. So in the midst of getting the radio reads. He was saying, radio reads with some of the older meters, they ain't compatible. He says, you've had people tell you that they're compatible with every census two meter, he said they're not. They've had towns, it's fried there. Uh, some kind of a chip that's in the older meter, so along with that. I was like, wow, that's really gonna cost town, you know, to go through and replace every meter in town. They had, and I got a meeting with rural water next week and kind of discussed more of this, he said there are grants out there that are ninety percent. Grants, they're a green some, green grant, I think. That if you can show like a ten percent or twelve or ten to fifteen percent revenue loss through your water meters. You can, you're pretty sure you get a ninety percent there to this green grant. So I've been kind of discussing with rural water over that. Like I say, I'll I'll get out and do some flow tests and come somewhere, so when you're flowing the water, people ain't think you're wasting. You know, set a sprinter up on the lawn and water, like your ass, water, pardon, whatever, and do a flow test. Uh, one thing I hate to say is, I goofed up and I was a community probably knows with their water bills. Came out a nitrate violation, that was my bad, I overlooked it. Nitrate is an annual thing every year you're to uh test for. And with the COVID, this and that and that, I overlooked it, so that was my bad, it's not that the water is bad to drink. It's just, I'm required every year to test for, I've never hit an MCL, which is maximum contamination level for nitrate. On my years prior, so just let everybody know, the water's still good to drink, just because you got that. Notice that I failed to test for nitrate.
Test just a month late.
Well, this is an annual, once a year nitrate.
Yeah.
Back cheese is the one you gotta worry about.
Yeah.
You know, and I I do them every month.
Right.
You know, or we'd be in like a a boil order, you know.
Yeah, right.
So. Engine brake sign, them are up. I live right here on Second Street. It's cut down on some, but some I don't think can read it, you know, but anyway, engine brakes are signs did get put up. Again, back to this, the COVID, everybody went, well, a lot of people and other towns municipalities are having issues with these. Flushable wipes. It's not flushable at all, it's plugged us up numerous times. We fought it yesterday, we fought it again today because of these flushable flushable wipes. I've got a uh. Some brochures that eventually pass out, maybe mail it to each customer on a water bill or something, explain it. Throw it in the dang trash, you know, they do cause problems, so.
You put it on the site too.
Right, and there are a lot of communities, I go to water conference every spring. And there's always somewhere in the class, somebody's talking about these flushable wipes, it's false, they're not flushable. This last episode, it wasn't just flushable wipes either. And rags, and that's a bad sign when you start getting rags in your your sewage, it's. Some other things going on, drug activity, you know, so. I'll be keeping an eye on that, but the flushable wipes was a big, but I was getting shop rags. You know, who flushes a shop rag, I guess, you know, but. One other thing. Still in search of a motor grader. I come up with one. It's in Bozeman, Montana. And I thought it was actually a individual that was selling, I got in contact with the guy. He's actually an equipment dealer. They purchased it from a guy that was going out of business. It's a uh. Two thousand eight John Deere eight seventy-two D, which is. The one we had was a six seventy-six A, this one's bigger, you know. Still got fourteen inches, or fourteen inches, fourteen foot moldboard, so, you know.
It's quite a bit bigger.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot more horse.
Right, well, power.
Yeah.
But your mold board's still the same.
Right.
As the original that we had. Uh, the hours on it was ten thousand eight hundred and forty hours. And he was wanting eighty-one thousand nine hundred. Got in the discussion of what was. Tagged to sixty thousand, but. You know, I mean, I I've got, I got a printout of this, it's a good clean, I I've talked to the guy over the phone, asked for. You know, if there was oil samples done. When he first, he said, their mechanic went through it, he said, it's a good clean machine, you know, but again, it's his mechanic. So it's taking his word on that, but I asked him if there was any kind of records of maintenance when this contractor had it. He was gonna look, I said, you know, if there was oil samples done, much for that, because that tells you a lot. He's never gotten back with me on that part, you know. He said, uh, he was gonna try. Well, he said, he may have got busy, he runs his own little business of hauling equipment, he's a truck driver on the side, so. Besides working for this equipment dealer. So it's an option, I mean. I know I said it in the fall, I said winter's coming on.
Eighty-one.
I'm gonna, yes. I said, I'm gonna need it, and of course, this winter's been following, oh, kind of, I mean, it hasn't been that bad. It's starting to get cold now, but snow wise. We are coming into spring. With driving these roads around here, I'm sure you all drive them. Or getting back.
We.
Nothing. Yeah. But.
I mean.
The way I look at it.
Really need one this spring.
But if you rent one, I mean, it's not, you need it year after year after year, so, I mean, it's my opinion. And like I say, this is my opinion. We need to get one.
I I would need the authorization to exceed my my, all I can offer now is sixty thousand, that's all I'm. Also, that one increased on to over there. Well, we have more money, but I but the council only authorized sixty thousand.
Sixty.
We have more money available, but if I'm right, the motion was to authorize. Me to negotiate up to sixty thousand dollars, is that right? Is that what you remember? That's what I remember.
And like I say, I I mean, I need this back, but if you guys would look like, look at someone's picture. My issue with buying used, we did it before, we was in a hurry to get a blade. We needed it, we did, we got what we paid for, you know, it was an older blade, I realize. Heavy equipment, you can buy one for five dollars, you know, that don't run. So the money that you spend on is gonna be what you get out of it, you know, I mean, yeah, you might think eighty thousand is a lot. But, well, look at the pictures, I mean, it's.
It's good paint.
Yeah, I mean, it's clean, I mean, and it's nice, you know, and but it's. Besides taking care of the roads in town, we also take care of the runway at the airport. We've got them flights coming in every day, you know, the dirt runways up there, anyway. And I'm gonna bring up a sore subject, but we also take care of poison grid, anybody that's been out there ice fishing, bogey folk, been out there rattled your teeth apart going across that. It's a county road, but the county will not take care of it, the county says it's a park, the park says no, ours ours don't start until the category, the fee area. I made a deal with John Bass. You get your blade from the west shore over List Side, you blade, we'll take turns, the town does use it, our wells are out there. Our tank, you know, so, yeah, I go out on it every morning and that new truck's rattling to pieces because it's bad.
Well, I've read all of the minutes, I've printed all those off and read the minutes for an entire year. And this topic has been brought up, I don't know how many times.
Well, that's what I was saying, I brought it up in fall because.
So I've concluded.
But and and honestly, honestly, I'm to the point, and I I have had him come to my house writing about these roads.
Yeah, and the question.
I'm gonna say here, here's the councilman's number, call him, you know.
Maintenance item, that doesn't even have to fit, does it? Because it's used.
It's right, used.
And he does, but. Used and it's maintenance, that's what I thought.
Chris, I think said that we have about seventy-five thousand in that budget line, but I was only authorized to go to sixty. We missed some good buys last summer, and that's why I asked to get authorization to negotiate, I I've been looking for. In the sixty fifty thousand range, low hours, it would be a, we, I don't know, last last summer, there was a bunch of blades for sale that. Some of them went fairly reasonable, but I didn't have the authorization to to strike a deal.
This one is being looked at by another contractor.
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, it's.
He asked.
Snooze, you lose, you know, I I hate to say it that way, but I mean, we gotta, we gotta do something.
What do you think, Mike, you've got some equipment experience?
I think that based on what the internet says on that particular model. I think the price for that model is consistent with the internet as far as, so what I can tell you that I found in the last five seconds as far as.
That's, yeah, that's sort of what I looked at, there was some. If you're looking at the hours and stuff like that, they're. So they're. That's in the ball, seemed in the ballpark.
You know, I I would come from the approach on something like that, I would, if it was in my spot, I would call the guy back and say we're offering seventy-five thousand dollars delivered to Shoneyland. Because your freight on top of it's going to be two, three thousand, maybe two. And when he says no, can I give him your number? It's just like, all right. Another month to come back in front of you guys, you know, I mean. Seven, based on when we're talking negotiations, I would say seventy-five thousand is a little less than market, based on what it what it is.
And him deliver, but this is.
Because that's what he does.
Part-time aside from working at this equipment dealer.
Well, tell him we're no hurries, got to march.
This is in Bozeman, did you say?
Yeah, Bozeman, Montana.
Would it be worth our time for the two of us to go on a little junket and check it out?
The road's up that ways, you driving?
You take my equipment with you.
No, it's been on a serious note.
Call me, let me know.
Would it be worth sending Bud up here to look at, or do you think you could?
Well, if we if we get close on the numbers. Say Cody.
What's that?
Say Cody.
Is it Cody?
No.
No, Bozeman, Montana.
Find one in Cody, is it ten thousand eight hundred and fifty hours on it?
Yeah.
I thought it was nine thousand, or was it ten?
Yeah, I just. Thousand eight hundred and forty. Somebody took my shoes, you know, I didn't get it back. And I definitely.
Owned by Mountain Equipment? Is it Mountain Equipment?
He said Bozeman, Montana.
Yeah.
So I see a broker.
See, I got that off of uh. There's a website for equipment, and I went on there, and that's why I thought it was. Individual, so I called, well, first I texted him, I wanted to know what year, no, Matt. What year it was, he texts me that, told me it was two thousand eight, he said, I'll call you later on, I'm busy right now, so he did. When I got to talk to him, he said, well, I think it's an equipment deal, because I asked him how, you know, he said, well, I bought it, and I said, well. And he said it was through a contractor.
I got, I got a question for you, Bud, would would you recommend keeping our little patrol? Or thing, or would you recommend selling it?
I would recommend keeping the little one because.
I thought.
Alleywise, you got gas meters.
Yeah.
Everything else. Yeah, I know. Big one, I ran the big ones in an alley, I can do it, but it's, you got really gotta pay attention, or you're gonna get a gas meter.
Yeah.
You know.
Mike, what do you think that ship, if someone trucked it out here and we. Mike, pretty cool, twenty-five hundred bucks probably, no, you said twenty-five hundred?
Yeah, that would be high. I think we just, we've been shipping stuff from.
I think our last one that we got, John Deere. See, I went to Spearfish and looked at, and it was at a racetrack, that's all it ever did, most of its life. But it was about two thousand.
It says in Cody.
Bring it down.
I found it, the pictures are the same. So it said it's Mountain Equipment, Cody, Y O. Context, D Swan, but the pictures are the same, the price is eighty-one nine. Says in excellent condition, fourteen foot moldboard. Says in excellent condition, porking foot mold board.
How much was the price?
Eighty one nine. Picture same.
All right, well, I'm making sure.
That's where the quit, anyway, that's, that's who it is. So if it was in Cody, it'd be even better. Cody a hundred miles away, it'd be eight hundred thousand bucks straight.
Then that's that mountain equipment. That sounds right. But this Matt said.
Doesn't mean it's not located, so I, I can't get into further to say if that's what, if mountain equipment is based in Cody, and then they have this sitting up because we bought it, they're the guy.
Like I said, that'd be even better if it's in Cody, but I can call Matt tomorrow and find out for sure, you know? But yeah, on the, on the website, he showed
I, I like, I seen the Bozeman Montana's, also, I looked at, looked at a bunch of others.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How was the rest of your equipment? Tobacco and stuff?
Backos, you know?
You're gonna need a backhoe.
Gonna need, I thought we was gonna need one right away here, just thing was last week, because the guy's called me up and said, man, it's not moving. They thought the train battery had went dead. But it's gotta have power from the battery for the ship to go in the reverse mode. So we lucked out there, but yeah, I thought, oh, man, wow, what a great time, but.
So what are yours at?
I'd have to look back through the records and can really tell you. I know they've had it for a while. A new haul one.
So how much are you, are you using tobacco?
I'd have to look into that. Like, I haven't looked at nothing on backhoes. It's mainly been concentrate.
I've been looking at backhoes too.
Have you? Yeah, I haven't even looked at them. I've been concentrating on this, so.
They're half a hole, half loaded, and they're twice expensive. You don't have enough of pride, I'm not put back, but they're, that they're easy to transport and they're at auction. It'd be fantastic.
Well, I guess I was looking for an extender hole, right?
Oh, yeah, you definitely want
An extender hole, right. Yeah, I've been, I've been kind of looking. There's been more of them up for sale that might be a reasonable buy, but I thought the blade was more, I was gonna see, we had any money left over after we bought a blade.
Right.
Those is equipment budget seventy five, as of now, sixty, we have seventy five thousand.
Seventy, yeah. I was trying to find both for that price. And we may have been able to do that last summer, but it doesn't appear now prices, there are not as many of them, and they seem to be priced more. There was a, there was a lot of them on the market, I think, because of the economy, last summer, there was a lot of.
Right, and there was, and now it's
Yes, different prices.
Totally different.
So what's the plan for looking into this opportunity before it's gone?
Yeah, let's get
It's kind of bottom line, do we have, does anybody have an idea what do, do you have?
No, I have permission to negotiate from the council. I have sixty thousand dollars. I've been let's go to seventy five, I mean.
Well, so the, I guess the question is this kind of buddy, if the backhoe dies this year,
I know.
Where are we at? I mean, what's?
The backhoe dies? That's why I've been looking into the bowl of price range, but I haven't been able to find one.
But if it, if it goes, if it goes down this fiscal year, do we, do we say we just gotta go rent one on a lease for six months?
You got enough of my two shovels. I'd have to come back to council if they're members. If they're available, and I guess I can't give you the exact answer.
Sure.
Look like depending on when we have available. And if not, it'd be potentially something that we would use the maintenance department here for one reason.
What are we gonna do as the other? What's the other grater? Instead?
Go on and stop blowing motor.
How much you give us for it, Mike?
You know?
Well, it's got, it's got value. So on the one hand, I don't, I couldn't tell you what. But I know that would help offset the cost of the increase. So instead of, we had five thousand dollars out of the other motor grater. Now it's like you're only asking for seventy thousand technically, and you got but even at seventy five thousand, that's if, that's if the guys willing to go for it. So we're sitting at eighty two, fair mark.
Right.
Would you go seventy five, would you go eighty thousand?
Which you actually need some.
I, I, I bought things pretty good with hundred dollar bills sometimes. They're saying no, you lay down fifteen thousand, but I bought a shabell like it, fifteen thousand dollars, hundred dollar bill. They took it with me and he locked twenty, and I put out the hundred dollar bills. Nineteen seventy S S, well, he took it.
So you can keep whatever you
They're not sending you to Cody with eighty thousand dollars.
Huh? Yo, you're not?
No. But he does have another guy looking at it.
Well, I can call
Like he said, he said
Seventy thousand.
He said, it's the first one. You know, he said, I can't, because I ask, you know, you got other people looking.
Although I would sell, I would say that too.
He said, I can't. Well, right, as a Sam, yeah.
Better hurry.
But yeah, he says he can't hold. You know, it's the first person that comes up and then it's, it's a
Like you said, talking about
Please pass, be as a my view.
Please do.
We prob- probably will.
If I get the authorization.
If it's in Cody, that's a date trip for you to run up.
We'll find out where it's, we'll ask where it's at.
If it isn't Cody.
Right.
Yeah. Car and some lunch.
But we need a good blade. I'd like to see oil sample, you can see the oil sample, that'll, we can tell a lot by that. But it looks, you know, looks nice.
Right. I mean, a, a new one would be better, but you know. Let's say, but you know, and hour wise, a lot of them that you talk to, and I've talked to other people that run blades for a life. They say, you know, the hours ain't necessarily working. Contractors idle them a lot, you know? So, you know, the hours is just, it's set there. I love them too. It's not the working, so. Most of them said that's mostly what their hours are, is idling.
I don't know what the motion would be, or I'd make one.
Just authorize Joel set up to seventy five thousand dollars on trying to get this grater.
Try to buy a, buy a blade.
That's all you, that's what the motion has to say?
Yep. Yeah, just give me authorization to do it.
All right, I'll make that motion, see if it flies.
Been moved second, mayor, you can authorize her to negotiate up to seventy five thousand dollars for a new blade for the town of Shoshone.
Yes.
Any further discussion? None being, all favor say aye?
Aye.
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 So I got Still shopping for a ship.
Of course. I had a random question of the day. The, the way that the water, the main tank on the hill works, it comes down the, down the water slide and it splits off into two lines into town, that.
You have, you got one that comes in, there's two lines coming down, but they're actually on the hill. One goes in, the other one brings it back down. Yes.
So it's set up that if one line fails and the other one?
You can, you can feed back.
Both, are both lines good currently?
No.
So, so if the line goes down, then we don't have
Well, if one of them, we had an episode where one of them went down here a while back. Went out there early in the morning, filled my checks. Spring of water squirting out of the side. I think it was Archer. Yeah, it was Archer, Archer Construction. You know, we don't have the equipment to go outside that hill to dig it, so I got all the hand. We was able to isolate that line. Feed through the other one back down, but as he was digging not Barack over, hit that one, then we was out of the tank. But yes, you know, if one of the lines went down, you have the option to run down the other line.
So, but that, that was the question. Both lines are
They're operating.
They're operating.
They're not.
One, one's not broken half.
Because right now, they require like well six, when we run well six, they want going through the hang. The for nation, for mixing in the tank, then coming back down. At the bottom, we do have not, you know, opening up a valve. It will work, come wherever the man is, to town or to the tank. Right now, it's shut where it goes up in the tank. So yes, you can't route it if either.
Anything else? Want to talk about the library a little bit? Or?
Sure.
So just, uh, real quick and live red. Working well. She's been doing all the work. Uh, Wanda is compiling a list of some books that she would like to see added to her collection. Some that she believes would be requested by the community. And so hopefully she will have that list here soon, and we can work on getting that ordered this year for her, so she can expand her folks. I believe she's looking at some large print books as well for some of the uh, senior citizens. Said the hardbound books. And also looking at some potential other avenues of programs being added. With the IT realm, more not necessarily virtual library, but just other uh, programs that can take advantage of some of the technology advancements that are out there. At least taking a look at it for looking forward. So we have talked about that as well. Her library report. Yes, you can read it, but, uh, to those ninety seven adult patrons, ten children. Six for meetings, seventeen for story time. Hundred and thirty total visitors, nineteen using computers. Uh, four for personal computer use. Hundred and twenty seven circulation of books. Two new library cards. She reported twenty five dollars and thirty cents in income for the month. And then as the councilman, Demick, brought up about the hours, she addressed that in her report regarding a patron commenting about inaccessible hours based on their schedule, not having it open and requesting the expansion of hours, which we've already discussed. The last several months, numbers were up because people did not have television access, were using the library for DVDs. One family in January purchased a television and then moved out of town. And the person that left the DVDs didn't return them, or did not return. Yeah, did not return them and moved out of town. It's actually an issue that we've dealt with with the police department on that aspect. As well as some, uh, other dog calls that, uh, anyway, that's kind of a police realm, I guess. She had ordered the tax booklets and forms, uh, but she couldn't find any available. I will point out that, uh, I will get her some if she needs them for distribution to the community. I do have some in the office that I can gladly give to the library. Uh, and I'll get that to her this week, so with that, if you need, uh, tax forms and booklets to help, library will have those available for you to access. And then she mentions the Thorndike Press as, uh, some offers on large print books, which I discussed, that I had talked to her about as well. So that's in the works for getting a list together, see what we can get ordered this year for, and the library. That's in the library. Unless.
Okay, we the mayor's report. Uh, there's a couple short things. We had a F CAG Fremont County Association, a government meeting, meeting here that, that Shoney hosted. Uh, I think it was a, a real, I think, pretty good success, Mike and and Bob. Is there? Ron, were you there? Uh, and I was there, but anyway, without Kathy Sol. And Kathy did, I mean, Blair, Kathy Blair, were the, were the chefs. Were the chefs and provided that the menu was either Salisbury or Salisbury steak or, or chicken corn on boot. Uh, with German chocolate cake for dessert, uh, what was the other?
It was a dump.
Oh, and a dump cake. Yeah, I loved both of them, so. Only ate, only had the German chocolate. It was really, really good. It was very well received. The people that attended were, you know, now they're saying they're gonna have to try it out, do this, but anyway, they were, it was people there appreciated. We don't have a cafe in town lots of times. These F CAG meetings will eat at a cafe before or after, you know, use a lot of time, I mean, before meeting and we have a conversation. But anyway, so it was much, and, and we even got a letter. I just wanna just, it was to me, but I didn't, shouldn't get the credit as well. It said, says, dear uh, thoughtful members of the town, yeah, members of the town of Shoshone, so it's all of us. Thank you for hosting the recent F CAG meeting. You were all so welcoming and in, and inclusive. The lunch you prepared was wonderful and mushrooms were much appreciated. We, you all are what is about Wyoming sincere, sincerely. Polly Hines, and she, she's from Atlantic, or from, uh, one of the Atlantic, or not Atlantic City, or Sweetwater Station, Sweetwater Station. Anyway, yeah, it's, uh, but, yeah, so I, I thought it went, went well. It was Kathy and Kathy's idea. They put it all together. I really, I got a lot of the credit I didn't deserve. But I took it. But they, but they, and they did just a, the meal was just really, it was excellent, and we had, had a good meeting and I think everybody was full and that was a good success. Pardon? Yes, yeah, we had a, we had a pretty, we had a good turnout, uh, the county commissioners, all the mayors, clerks, we had, we had a pretty good, pretty good turnout. And, uh, that meeting went, 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 went real well. Other than that, I really, that's we've been here long enough, that's
I have a question every hour.
Yes, please.
You sent us an email dated, uh, September on
Correct.
Formants. Will you address that, please?
Sure. What would you, what would you like to know?
Well, um, what is the role of the rest of the body other than, I think, I read section fifteen two, that one oh two, again, power to the point. Last meeting, I brought up a name to represent. And I was told I didn't have, did it wrong time? Mike, I don't know the policy on its appointments, so would you like to address that?
If, the if you have, okay, my, my, if you wanted to appoint somebody, bring it, bring it to my attention. And, and we can, we, we can discuss that. If you feel that someone is not doing their job, that's, is, that's already appointed, and then they should be replaced, and that should be brought to my, my attention, and we, we could, we could discuss that. As, as it is now, they are mayoral appointments. Uh, if we wanna get together and change that, we can do that by ordinance, or the governing body can do that by ordinance.
Thing is, I don't know when, so you say, well, I bring it to your attention, I brought it to your attention in public meeting. At, and wait a minute.
Okay, go ahead.
There's no place in the policy that says when that's supposed to be brought out. And so I brought it out, open meeting, I would like to present this thing or report. Uh, I don't see the agenda until February sometimes. And so I don't know what is on there to discuss.
But you could, you could bring, you could been appropriate to bring that up any, any time before that, you know, the week before, two weeks before, the month before, you could have brought it up and and saying that we, I think that we need to replace whoever and appoint whoever.
So I'm making a motion right now to replace someone. I can do that.
I'll have to consult the, the attorney on that, uh.
Plus four, he's the best person appointed by you.
Sure, it was a point. I'd have to contact the attorney to make sure that that is, that is, that is proper. I, as I That is, that is proper. I, as I acknowledge, we probably should have voted.
See, my problem is.
But when I make a mistake, I, I, I brought it up to you. I made a mistake.
And so I'm afraid we're gonna butt sleep by people who were illegally terminated, my opinion.
Whoops. Wish you hadn't said that, Bob.
You're welcome. But. And so.
Who do you think was illegally terminated?
According to our policy. And I will read it to you word for word.
That's right. We'll just leave it.
This is on page.
Look at the charter ordinance.
Once employed, all departments except the county attorney, they serve the pleasure of government bodies. Without the specific term, last year. Redesnus, the town clerk. And it placed you. It said without a specific term.
For cause. That wasn't how the minutes read, the rest read that they were to be reappointed, but they weren't up for appointment. And then minutes. Where they. What Bob's getting at, and I've been down this road before and we really probably should consult an attorney as to whether or not we should even be discussing this.
And if my feelings are, you know. Right now, I'll make a motion to dismiss our town attorney. Because he did not advise us more. Activities from last year. For negligence.
So you need a discussion on that. It has to be an executive session. And whether or not you can do that in. Anything other than new business. But if they allow that motion, I'm sure they're gonna second it.
Can't make that motion.
I made a motion. It was seconded.
You, you. The town, the town attorney is a contract employee, not a department head.
The town attorney may serve without a specific term.
If, if, if.
Without cause by majority vote, all of them, every, the governing board.
The town, the town attorney does not meet the definition of a department head.
It doesn't. Once employed, all department heads except the town attorney. Serve at the pleasure of the governing body without a specific term. And may be discharged for cause by a majority vote of the members elected to the governing body. The town attorney serves without a specific term and may be discharged at any time without cause. By a majority vote of the members elected to the governing body.
Read, read the first part, read the first part and just. It says all department heads. The town attorney is not a department head. That's right. He's not a department.
And he's not protected under this. He says, except the county attorney.
No, except the town attorney and that's referring him as a department head.
Yeah, see, I was afraid this was gonna happen sooner or later, but. I hate to use the term white elephant again, but out in the community, the community damn sure knows. That there's very little probability of this town council being all hugs and kisses for the next two years. And I hate to say that. But. I think there's a legal issue here. I really do. And there comes a point in time where how much does a person put up with? And I'm with Bob. I want that to be investigated. By an attorney. On how to dismiss the attorney, but we can't have him investigate himself. But we know. That. This is gonna turn into a pissing match. Is it probably very well should, but I have. And I'm not gonna share it with anybody here. I have. Some experience and some stuff and some dealings with somebody. That would damn near be grounds for disbarment. We'll have to discuss it in there.
I think all this should be done in executive.
Yes, personnel. We're talking the position. We're talking, how do we handle the position? Of town attorney. Bob gave a reason which you probably shouldn't have done. But I'm talking about the position. I want an attorney's opinion on how we handle the position. And I know I can do that. You could probably see this come. So what are we gonna do? Cause there's two people that have a. I don't know, burr under their saddle, so to speak, and we have a charter ordinance that says that. If you want to make a motion, have a second and voted on it to just to get rid of somebody without any cause given, it's right in the charter ordinance.
If he was a, if, if he was a, if some towns hire. A attorney that's getting a salary. Then they are and, and are, and have a department, they have a department head. We, she shown. Perry is a contract. Profession service of what he provides.
And it says the town attorney may be dismissed at any time with no cause given. It says also. I didn't need to read the first part.
He's a contract. Point, just as you said.
And I've also read state. The state statute on that. And our. In this particular instance. Our charter ordinance actually follows. The state statute on this.
Mm hmm. Agree. So what your.
My question is, well, the question I would have an attorney. Is who would have to initiate that? The mayor or the council? And it very well may, may be that the mayor would have to initiate that. That's the reason I want to find out. And if you don't want to initiate it, then it's the moot point. See.
Cause the mayor is the CEO of the town. Town is a corporation.
The town is a corporation and the people that own that corporation are sitting right here.
Sure. But the mayor is in charge of the day to day activities.
They are, as he is.
Okay.
Oh, I agree, but you also have a legislative body sitting.
For sure. And then, and when. And. And you do what you need to do for that.
Man, it's tough to.
But well, that was the. Advice I was given. By an attorney.
What attorney?
Attorney, city attorney.
Our own attorney. Gave advice on his own position.
I. Well, it's, he's an honest man and he was.
So can we call for a vote or not?
No, I think we're gonna make a motion to return the meeting. Before we go look like a bunch of. Well, maybe we already do.
So we have a motion.
Motion, yeah. And it's been called for the vote.
But the thing is, is. Is it a legal motion?
I'm gonna have to find out.
Cause it didn't happen during new business. There, you know. That's a good point.
Well, we did business during a report from Public Works.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a motion on the floor and we have a second. Is that what you're saying? I guess the mayor's gonna have to decide what to do with that.
I've been advised. That that doesn't fall under the. Under the authority. I will take it under the authority of the council. I'll seek legal advice on that and move from there and I'll address it. We'll address it next meeting.
From who will you seek legal advice? Or the guy whose job is jeopardy?
The, the, the attorney jobs in jeopardy if he fail.
I think the.
He, he believes in the rule of law.
Joel, I think the right answer is to consult another attorney.
I can, if the council wants me to do that, I will do that.
Or we vote on the motion, if it decides to do that, and then we find out if what we did was legal.
I see council without an attorney. I don't want to do a vote on something like that.
Neither do I.
Not as people that got fired.
But if you authorize me to. I will look into another. Spend some money and town's money and. Get an opinion from another attorney. First, you know, if I can, if I, if I can get a, if I get an answer from the county attorney or the, or the state. Attorney general, I've called both of them before some of them, but. Nervous about talking to them.
Does the town get sued if we make the vote?
Pardon me?
Do we get sued if we make the vote? By our, does our town attorney turn around and sue the town because we?
Cause we did an illegal dismissal?
Which one? I, I. Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't think this, I don't think this. I don't think this is something that.
Well, I think you, I think the appropriate thing for Joel to do is just to get a hold of, just to find out.
Let me research it.
From Perry and from somebody else.
Sure. I'll research it. You can research it too.
Yeah. Yeah, if we don't like the answer, then you make the. You see what I'm saying, Bob?
I see what you're saying. I'm waiting for a vote though.
Oh, you're not gonna withdraw your motion.
No. I can't, it's been called to vote.
I believe.
I made a call for.
And my, my response, I will, I, I, I personally, I believe that that, that the council does not have, this dot fall under your bill whack.
That's your opinion?
That's my opinion, so.
People disagree with that. Right now, there's a motion on the floor and a call for a vote.
I have, I have not. I will not.
Does that put, I mean, this, does that put you in jeopardy of not honoring the cause? I'm, I'm new here. I'm freshman.
I, I just said, I, I don't, I don't believe it's. I, I, I don't, I don't believe. That is in. Falls under the council jurisdiction.
And if.
For that, for that, that position.
If it does.
We'll, we'll correct it in the next meeting.
Well, in the most.
The next, the next meeting, the next meeting, we'll, we'll have this all cleared up and it'll be whatever it will be.
My opinion is just. In two weeks. Make sure it's on the agenda during new business or something.
Correct.
Through those rules.
Needs to be on the agenda.
And we'll.
Well, the ultimate outcome is not gonna change. I mean, probably, why not? Right, Jesus, see, that's why we need to not talk about this.
We'll deal with it next, next meeting. Make sure we're doing it right. And whatever that is, it will be what it, what it is. I'm instructed that, that. That, that. This falls under the council. Under their authority, then that's exactly what I'll do.
So the chair is not going to entertain the motion. Chair is not going to entertain the motion. So we're probably ready for a motion to adjourn.
I am.
So moved.
Have a second. Did move second during the meeting? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carry. Ten nineteen.
So officially the meeting's over. Make sure you officially won the wooden spoon award tonight.
I want a wooden spoon, let's split spoons.